So before site selection, discussion of third rules and annexes. Do you want to prep this matter?
Um, sure. What we've got is, let me just do one thing. Um, so as, as we discussed last week, um, there was, um, concerns, uh, with the environmental study and the, uh, geotechnical study on the Kinzo Mill side, uh, for consideration of the circuit court building. As we were preparing to report to the commission last week, Judge Hill contacted me asking for an update. And, um, I let him know about the extensive work that would have to be done to it. Get to a point where we can use, and that didn't include any possible surprises that we might come. Um, in summary, we would at a minimum need to excavate in between five and 10 feet along the old site. Uh, adding about 1.5 million dollars is what we estimate to the project. Uh, plus any kind of remediation that we might uncover as we get. As, uh, as I reported to Judge Hill, he, uh, still asked for, um, consideration of the annex idea, which is encapsulated in his letter, of having the, uh, circuit courts still operate out of the second floor of the historic courthouse in Hepner. And use the money for the new courthouse to develop an annex location in Borden, um, to take care of that. And as, um, as discussed in our meeting, uh, we reviewed that and, uh, since we, the commission voted, um, on two to one basis to consider at least, uh, to a consideration of Judge Hill's, uh, proposal. And to have him come in and, uh, discuss that review and, uh, take that in. As word got out, we have received some, uh, letters and notifications from local people chiming in on, on their own interests. Uh, we've also, uh, but where this is Judge Hill's idea and you consider that merit, we invited him during this work session to, to present and be able to answer any questions the commission had, uh, before considering the, um, the site location.
Well, you want to take it from there or you want to talk about it?
I can recap what we've talked about physically and try to address. Our trial court, sure, of course, we can get into the weeds to a certain extent that we need to. Uh, as the letter indicates statistically, essentially the North End services eighty and ninety percent of the population basically that we have coming for the courts. So a facility, I think it's extremely valuable for the population. Uh, and I can tell you Salem was ecstatic with the idea of an annex. They were just beside themselves with the idea that we'd be putting something in. Very supportive and actually set up a meeting for us for resource elevation going to legislature in December at this point, based on the idea that we would have an annex. Uh, so essentially we would, uh, propose that the courthouse in Hepner remains the courthouse. All the primary courthouses, that's fine. Okay, we'll operate. Statistically, holding a percentage of the cases coming from the Hepner, so some of the area. We will not put jury trials there. Jury trials is a big problem for, uh, in that courthouse. But it can operate with just about everything else and we prioritize to, uh, settle in issues. And so we have to schedule it accordingly. And if somebody opted that they wanted to have trial potentially or have hearings in, in South End, that would be fine too. With some sort of plan to. North End annex would be what we originally planned, basically. Essentially large courtroom, judicial chambers, staffing and everything. I think that we would be upwards of adding four positions, probably to do that, three clerks, judicial assistants. And I would think that we will be able to have a much greater chance of actually getting another judge. Which would have split time between Yumital and Morrow County. But because of this, we will probably get a option to try to amend the legislative request for judicial office. Nothing else I request in for a referee. So we think we're going to be in a lot better shape with the legislature, especially with the law school. Just the administrator and the chief justice with the boardman sort of site and that site. In order to actually get all these resources, five, you know, basically four additional staff. And if we can keep three in Hepner, that'd be great. Add three judicial staff in boardman plus a judicial assistant, have a supervisor and propose. We would be a fairly robust court system at that point, staff. Um, especially considering we're still only about a point five judge qualification for courts. So while depending on circumstances, if I had an extra courtroom in, in Yumital County, we'd probably be splitting a judge halftime between Morrow County and, and Pendleton or Hermiston depending on location for that. But if it's the only extra courtroom, it's probably going to be somebody there, uh, assigned board to do judicial duties. Half of that time would be going to Pendleton or Hermiston to hear cases. Or hearing cases remotely for the other point five, because we don't have all the time to qualify, justify over a point. But we qualify within six judicial district for six judges. We have five. I think actually by the end of this next year, we're going to look a lot worse off in the end. So we may be well into the six point five range or something like that by the end of twenty five anyway. So if we got a new judge, that position will not take office before January of twenty seven, I think. Uh, legislative authorization in January and twenty five, election in twenty six. So in the meantime, we have a request for a referee. So if we get an elected judge, we'll be looking for a referee, uh, Judge Pro Tem to fill in some gaps. First construction of the building, I mean, before January of twenty seven, I suppose.
Mm-hmm.
Be pretty close.
Yes.
So it may coincide actually with authorization of another judicial officer. And I can tell you Yumital County is going to be another, at least a year behind if we get a courthouse. If nothing else, we're a lot closer to having a judge body with us. Salem was not interested particularly jumping on the work of Hepner location either. Just, you know, for, for those resource issues. We would not be adding all of these resources. But with the boardman and annex concept, looks like we can probably ask for a lot. Yeah. Uh, and again, eighty percent of the population is serviced for the North End, whether they know it or not. And certainly, uh, same time, we'll compete some South End.
Issues?
Yeah. Judicial officer and staff there as needed. Staff will be there full time. That's what we're basically being authorized from Salem at this point. See that changing. And then judicial officer would be like we do now, roll them in as necessary for scheduled hearings.
Questions?
Do they have any counsel? Not as much as a legal counsel aspect or, you know, to your county council and board and district attorney. Just county council, no such thing. Where I think our information is clear, if we something weird, like Joe Chill's talking about, we talked about that in cases stuff in the past, we had a, uh, chief justice, her comments about being placed with, oh, the actual courthouse. So nothing from my perspective. So I could talk to him as the DA, that's interesting, but.
Well, you know, what's going to happen is, this will probably be on the agenda next meeting. Uh, because we have to make a decision where this is where we're going to fail it. So I guess it's, do you have anything you want to ask Judge Hill? Because we're formulating an opinion now, so. If you want to, it, it, I mean, I'm not talking, if you want to.
Oh, no, I won't. No, I don't want to be.
Okay. What, what about you? Just, do you have anything to ask or reject or?
I guess my only concern from the justice court side is this is not going to do very, it's going to do very little to alleviate the issues we have with justice court in South End. It can't be. Um, it will alleviate, Judge Hill is correct with the jury trials that keep getting scheduled. So then I have to change my scheduling and everything else. It will alleviate that. But it's not going to alleviate the issues where I still have a great deal of difficulty scheduling anything. Because of what may come up, that circuit court being a higher court takes precedence of. So whenever I have scheduled for the afternoon, because they have something going, I'm, I'm out in that field. I'm done. Um, as a consequence of what's been going on, because I've been forced to not schedule hardly anything in Hepner other than typical trapping things and schedule everything here at the North End, which is not fair to our constituents and everybody at the South End of the county. And it's not fair to have something scheduled and then have to pull the rug out under their feet constantly, not due to our courts, but due to the higher courts. So that's why I've chosen to move almost everything to this end of the county. Because at one point I'm not at least subjecting the people that we've scheduled and pulling the rug up. My concern is the adequate space, you clear use of the court, courthouse, courtroom during the days that the justice courts there. I don't see, that's my problem, that I don't see as an issue.
So your distribution case is similar to the circuit court percentage ones?
It's probably very, very similar.
So most of the cases we see are people that do reside in.
Not necessarily reside in the North End of the county, but would prefer to have their case be heard at the North End. But I mean, as of the last couple of years, it being at the South End of the county is not even an option because it had to cancel. So we just moved everything up here. So we're not giving them the option to have that.
Sure, but if there was eighty percent of those cases moved, uh, shooting free at a significant portion of time, I think.
But if, and yes.
Trials are, trials are the big problem because we don't know what's going to happen. You know, statistically, only three percent of cases are going to go to trial, but they get set for trial. So we go into a week and stacking trials against my docket, just Rollins' docket, Vera's docket. And then we're trying to prioritize what's going to get tried. That's going to be alleviated a lot with your courtroom, basically, and be able to adjust that way. For the purposes of heaven, I'm not planning on jury trials in heaven. Just unsavable. It's going to be easier to just do them and move the facility down here with the adequate jury space. You've seen what we've got there. Twelve jurors do not fit or fourteen jurors do not fit in that jury, jury. So if we have juries down here, that's what pops in and really messes up, I think, the schedule a lot. And we'll have static days where we're doing several criminal arraignments or motion hearings in the courtroom. So it'll be a few days a month that way with full time staff. But we'll be able to block that out because we've got to block it out for who are the judges going to be up there at that point.
And we'll have the ultimate say to shift.
Yeah, yeah.
So currently, how many positions are associated with this circuit?
We just have, we have three assigned positions.
Perhaps, so Hepner, so Hepner has three, two support staff and a supervisor.
We have one.
In the last fifteen years, we haven't had. It's been very difficult to.
So even, even keeping the two positions there than the floating supervisor, the, the second position's going to be hard. We're actually looking at having someone with four tens and drive from Hermiston, right? Very difficult.
Sure, though, the letters we're getting, we're concerned about impacts of employment in Hepner, but it doesn't sound like this would affect the employment.
It's not going to change. Those, those two positions are there for sure. If we could just get somebody to take that second position, we'd be happy as a clan, but we have to hire best qualified.
Yeah.
Not going to be reduction in employment full time. For those two slots. And then the supervisor can be either Hepner or down here where they want to do, because they'll roam to go into locations.
Hmm, you know, this question kind of comes out of the complaints that we've had about where we've chosen the site at. You know, the perception is, is that all your cases are criminal cases. Which, and I know that, but for the record, you know, would you, um, let us know what other kind of cases that are seen in the circuit court and, you know, a ballpark range of. Or lawsuits or whatever else it is that we do.
I haven't been that far out.
The civil was eighty percent from one day. Criminal was upwards of ninety-four percent.
Sure, so.
And so domestic relations, FEDs are a few, that kind of thing. Civil, civil, so you guys have big civil support. Um, and domestic relations is just going pretty wild, right? I'm going to probably speak to that as a sort of a statistic, really, you know. I think over half of them are real cases, civil.
Yes. Yes, probably closer to like sixty percent of our cases are going to be more on the civil.
And that's where we're kind of seeing in Yumital County too, civil is taking over. The numbers right now, changes. Law changes, but it's, so it's sixty percent that we're seeing in Yumital County, that kind of thing. Everyone's just a little bit behind. There are big numbers, but civil cases take a lot more corporate time, time on the bench. So depending on what happens, we still, it doesn't take much for a civil case to all of a sudden consume a day. Where they knock out a criminal matter of some nature in an hour or less, you know, for motions and things. So our docket's big for, for criminal in Yumital, but civil consumes bench time. And it's the same one here. As you said, one day divorce trial, that's what you got to do divorce trial.
So, um, I think there's quite the backlog in time to have cases go through the circuit court. And from what I'm hearing from you, if we went with the North County annex with the anticipated addition of staff. And meaning a judge also, that backlog or that time for a case to go to trial could be less.
I, I think the big issue there is we are, we're behind in some of the domestic relations type stuff. So when you look at it, if I'm, if I'm judging a case and the lawyers say they want a trial, I know I'm really caught up if I can set it within the next sixty days. If I'm looking at four or five or six months out, I know I'm not. I think they're setting it to four months. About four months. So, you know, it's a little bit like, if but that was affected by a lot of judges too. So if we didn't have a judge, referee, you know, a qualified judge anyway, uh, or an elected, that's going to speed you something. Total. Because now that space time, we take a judge from Pendleton and Hermiston, send them to Morrow County to try a divorce case. We don't have to really do that. But I mean, a judge that will be already scheduled, you don't have to take that kind of bet. Now, we have to decide whether or not judges that we assign for, for Morrow County, whether it's point five or point six, or where it might be. With them doing additional work for Yumital County is general jurisdiction too. So we have to decide whether or not they're going to do everything from divorce to murder. Uh, if that's what they're going to do, then we'll have to see whether or not whoever we assign can do that. That's kind of complex for competent, uh, judicial services. Or we have to do some rotation, any, or bring in domestic relations judge for these cases and have them backfill against their court. So we got more to think about, schedule, schedule this stuff, but obviously, but with another judge, my gosh, we will be infinitely better off than we are.
Well, people want to sue, file suit against someone. Come on, here, and they'll get resolution without matters, and it's not, or is that going to get fined in the face of the law? Everybody always wants. That's what this could do is provide a lot better customer service to present.
I totally believe that. This, this is going to be a much more, much better for Morrow County, the residents in general, and especially having the two locations, uh, that way. But time, time is of the essence. At the same time, legal matters take time in jail. You know, two parties, they may, the court may say, I can do your trial in two months, away too soon. You know, I got lots of discovery to do and then six months later. But then we are working with the customers in facilitating a case, and we don't look like California eighteen months out or something like that. So another judge is going to help. That's why Salem's actually interested in helping us along those lines. Another nice courtroom is going to make a lot of difference because we're not going to jockey courtrooms. What we did with our referee judge, and we do not have a referee judge right now, was filling in an empty courtroom, circulating around. That's, that's inefficient, hard to manage in the first place. So we'd be avoiding that problem. So, yeah, things would be better. Sorry, I think getting them scheduled.
My apologies, we're having issues with the audio. We're just going to have to put it back in the center and ask everybody to project, let's say.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, yes, you did.
It just seems to me like very good. The story for it on the situation. Used for other things. You guys do tours through their evening, like that, tell us in advance, please. So, hearing, but I think the county would be so much better off. I've heard from some of like the forensic lab type folks going, if we can draw, come on, bring our experts into boardman rather than driving all the way up to, uh, Hepner, they would appreciate that. So there's time value in just bringing experts, specialists in for, for hearings and stuff. So there's a lot of advantages to the annex.
So I guess to summarize, what I've heard is that it would be a better customer service. And it's actually going to increase employment opportunities in the county if we had an annex. Four, I think.
Expanding access, you know, we're getting a lot of jury calls as well. I don't, I don't drive, I'm not going to go so I think our jury turnout will also be a good significant.
Something you may not know, I looked it up, you know, Bobby on her website, as the jury书记, sixty-five percent of the registered voters reside in the North End zip codes. So there's sixty-four and a half percent here of potential judges.
Just one of my questions, as you said, you raised, I was just saying, I mean, you said, I'm going to extend. You said.
Well, the chief justice, the state. That work with legislative fiscal and that kind of thing. They, we're actually past the period of time to introduce legislation. They are going to go through, trying to get sufficient, what purposes to add, we'll have policy option packages. So I, this discussion is to be had, but my discussion is to add an elected judge and these four new positions. District. Now, I gave the four new positions to. So it'd be a judicial assistant and four, 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 operations associates, all paying the same, actually, but different titles, that kind of thing. But four new positions right here. Fairly large.
The state one.
It's a state. No, no impact, you all, just the, the boom. And of course, for us, with the, with our electronic system, you know, all the C, they can do together. Pull up a queue and do Yumital County work if there's law. And we'll actually have them doing some statewide type, type of things like post conviction or leave prom and some things like that here at the agency. But it won't be sleepy half. We will, we'll keep them busy because we're, everybody's behind right now anyways. We'll have other work that's.
So, you know, question, and I guess I need to get some clarification standing up. If the courthouse was built in Hepner, still have two. So how does moving the courthouse change the dynamics of the two courthouses?
New facility in Hepner, it wouldn't have the old, the historic. We can only operate one facility.
So that's, so you bring it to, I mean, you did raise.
Right, yeah, right. Yeah, it's an annex, Salem wants to, it's a service to the community type thing. It's a strategic direction of the chief to be able to do that. That sort of service. So it's benefited that way, and that's why they're opening up the pocketbook, or at least their, their ability to go there. We have some good legislators who've helped us with those things, I think. But if we were, if we're locating another courthouse in Hepner, we'd still be in the same position, struggling to hire somebody. We'd have a nice facility, jury room, stuff like that, there may be. Wouldn't have the ability to do the video. So if we get a situation where somebody is in Hepner and holding their hearing or something like that in Borden, they can go in the Hepner courthouse and do it by video back and forth. So we can set up some arrangements like that, so we can be very fluid with it, even if we get the wrong location for an arraignment, that kind of thing. But I imagine what we'll try to do is we'll, we'll work with, uh, we'll take the system and try to identify, we're going to best do the arrangements and stupid hearings based on who the defendant is and what entities involved. Board and police will probably do it in more.
I, probably just going to disagree with you guys. Yeah, um, the only thing, I get some comments on, um, our staffing, court staff adding, or there would be a discussion on how we function in DA office. In both spots, we'll still have to have possibly staff in both or still offices. And so that's the one issue for spacing. I'm not sure that changes the spacing issues. If there were, I know we were talking about utilizing some of the space in the courthouse in Hepner, for any growth issues or even spreading out. We might, we probably still have to utilize our offices in Hepner still. I don't think we can fill those up. Victim advocate, if we're doing work in both, so that both spaces, so I would imagine Julia's office would still be utilized in both. Child's court, we probably just keep them. But the court function would be have offices on both. If court staff is fully functioning, taking work in the North End, then we'll have to decide it on that courthouse annex. It's going to be utilized for a whole week. Then is the idea, are we going to have staff, we'll hold because of that annex in both spots. You know, does the public consider, hey, we got this court with the court and they say, pop the DA office, right now it's. It's be the, the, the both. We find that, I'm not sure if the public will dispense with having the DA office full time in an annex, if the court's open in the spot, it's just pay the DA office also, also accessible. So if there's in both spots, we have to have both the DA, and to be a discussion point, I'm not sure. It depends on the schedule. We'll get to say, if the annex is just utilized for court that matters, Thursday's for us, we just do that. Those days, or do we have a little pump in the accesses? So I think that's one issue that could be a vegetarian. Does our office need to increase in size and representation in both areas still? That's one thing. I think for the justice court, I do, just from our perspective, it looks, I'm not sure the plan is to keep the justice court here still and have it the same place. If you agree that it should resolve the issues with the jury trial, there is Happener, justice court can still utilize it, maybe. And I think that is one of the big conflicts that come up is when those trial settings are set, or even motion hearings, things like that, they're, they're trying to set on a non-Thursday. And that's where it starts pumping justice. So no matter if the courthouse is in a, have their new spot or the annex in the North End, that should alleviate some of the just court, justice court conflicts you had. That is an issue that started many, many years back, before the new courthouse. Those conflicts were ones that we. So that's all I thought so far from, I mean, it will be wherever. It's just that we have two locations functioning. Do we think we need to have a presentation in DA office in both locations? Staff will help somebody, not maybe not an attorney there, but staff will answer questions. That happens quite a bit now.
Yeah, I mean, right now I spend probably ninety percent of my time here in Oregon, so it would just be us relocate y'all from here to Borden. In terms of staffing, I think we're going to put in a budget request for new position anyway, so we can stamp that in Borden, maybe.
I think it's just the idea too, is the, the idea of saying it's, when the state adds additional employees, we're worried about that, but when the county we're going to be coming in for asking for positions that way, we change them. So I just wanted me to be aware of. Yeah, I mean, also, I know, um, defense counsel Dan Sees here and worked here, he came by, I know he had an interest in it too. And, um, make clear with me, I know this wasn't, this is probably common, I think, agenda, but I think that their position, I think defense attorneys are, they have a better chance of getting work and boardman enabled. Now, so he has a lot more he, he could add, but, um, I think that was one, what I received from talking to the. I was, I, he has a lot more he, he could add, but, um, I think that was one, what I received from talking to defense councils, of course, it'd be a much better drive. Maybe I get more work to pay for it, but it's been working out so far, so. I would say Dan is probably the one that drives every day to Hepner, you know, almost eight, on Thursdays, so that's all I have.
As far as public, now, we don't make a decision of this, we don't have a public comment. Agenda, and we didn't have the principles, but next week, we will, it'll be on the agenda again, we're gonna. Should be, that's what the plan is. Where this is gonna go, at that time, we, we do have a public comment section ahead of, the people have three minutes to speak. It's not a given tape. It's just, uh, it's just speak to the board commissioners, so that will be in that. If anybody wants to. Take advantage of that, and you could, we do comment onto them or in the. So, see if we still have somebody at the head of, we're not taking public comment today, but we will next week. This is just a reception to, like the judge field, walk things over like we have to do.
Did we still have, did we have, did we even have any questions or comments from the project manager?
Um, we could.
It would machine, uh, I mean, one of the things we have earlier, um, from audience, and we have Austin and Rory available online. Um, and possibly if you could just say if we were to, um, proceed with the annex and have you come forward, that's okay. Just what that would entail with, um, with the process going forward.
Yeah, I guess, you know, big picture, the thing that comes to mind is we've been spending time, which is a, an expensive thing, um, exploring the annex site. And, uh, this would be a different project, and so we would kind of need to, we, we know the site, if the site in Boardman is the site that the county owns, you know, we've done some diligence to that site. It would just be from a design perspective, kind of starting over from the programming process. So the programming of the state's needs and all of that's done, so if the Boardman site, or excuse me, if the Hepner site was selected, we're really ready to kind of go quick or, or follow the normal process. Um, so there, there would be some kind of starting over on the programming side of things, that's really more, um, our architects' purview per se, but, um. So, so there's gonna be some time lost in this new direction, but that, that's the big thing. Uh, I can point to, you know, some additional programming expense as well to define the new projects.
Um, I mean, that's, that's one thing, right now, the, the court complex that we're looking at for South County would have included a justice court and a separate court facility, uh, there. Having one here in Boardman, we would not duplicate that, we haven't continued to use this, uh, current space, and so whether that space is where we reduce it, or if we have to put in additional offices to facilitate since. Uh, we aren't co-locating or close locating with the historic courthouse offices down there. Um, the other one, uh, just a little, you know, with the courthouse in the south, we're anticipating doing something with that second floor. We haven't made any determinations, I had some, some fun little dreams about redoing it and, and getting, taking care of and expanding your, the space, the annex area and. We pretty much say, you know, you live with the square footage you have right now, you're not gonna gain any of that, so that's just a, a minor consideration that we have there, but generally the programming is, and of course site selection. We do have a couple sites that the county owns, but if those weren't exactly where we wanted to go, then we would have to go through negotiation and. You know, site determination and security of the sites would be the other question.
I guess my question then is. The, the Boardman site, you know, all this stuff, property, we already own, they took, uh, part of the new property?
Well, um, that's.
Yeah, I've heard of it, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I know, but I didn't know it was a question. Yeah, I mean, it is so an opportunity, I don't, you know, I mean, that hasn't been put into the mix as far as.
But that was the only.
How long is it gonna be, where is it located? So if that's in the mix, then are we gonna be able to make a decision? Sure. So it's gonna be. That, have a decision. So we are, we are not sure.
Well, I have not received direction from the board, which location you, we have two acres there.
You did say there was another location, another consideration.
Well. We haven't started any negotiations, it would be determination in the board.
I just don't remember. It's same.
Well, and this is an open option, since we, we have.
Well, I, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, to figure out where we're at, because we have been going with the Boardman program in the home. Now, apparently you have, have a sense that we're gonna look at more property, but just differently. And I just tried to figure out what I'm, what I'm crossing. What these. Cause I haven't heard, I mean, I heard it because he.
I haven't, I haven't taken any steps in that direction, waiting for board, or direction. So this is just if you were to determine that those two acres that originally had the transit.
So, okay, so when I told the public that we're gonna make a decision next meeting, that's not necessarily the case.
It could be.
Well, I know, it could be, but if you wanna go, if, 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 and then you and the public are wanting to have a property, it isn't.
That's, um.
I'm just trying to let the public know you have an annex. Is it tracking differently, require a different piece, that's probably not gonna happen in the next meeting, we don't have to be able to say, we wanna go to a property right here. I was, I was talking, I've been talking here, if there's a definitive decision in the.
Went on, there could be the decision whether or not we can perform the concept of a board.
That's right, that's, that's, that's the understanding I have, is this is, this is information, we're just looking at what other options would be, if, if there was a decision to look at going forward. To, to a possible site in the county, would we, then the question comes up, would we still want to go with the county property or would we look for a better location? Because from the project manager, he says that the location that we own is not a preferred location. That it would be better if it was, uh, in a different part of the town, and that, that could be a deal breaker, saying it's not, I'm, I'm here strictly for information.
Well, at this meeting, but like I said, I've been, I've been talking here, like, we're gonna make, we're gonna make a decision between Boardman and Hepner next meeting, and that's not necessarily the case. I just want the public to know exactly what we're doing. And now we're into a process.
And we make, we may make a decision in the next meeting that, that we wanna move forward with more investigation on more than property.
Correct, but I just want people to know that, you know, they're not gonna make a definitive decision next year.
Not necessarily. I mean, we can't, we can't say that to take, we don't know. That's why we're getting this information, so we can make those.
Understood, I'm just trying to put a, put a shirt, make it in the focus so people know what we're doing.
I don't know that you can do that.
I, no.
I don't know that you can do that.
Well, you can tell them that we're still considering other sites, we do not have a Boardman site picked out, because we've already investigated the Boardman site we already own. The, uh, architects and they, they don't allow that, so that was where we were tracking. And I mean, I'm not pushing for one way or the other, I'm just trying to make it clear to everybody where we're at, we're back, we're back on the drawing boards where we, where we're gonna put it. Not necessarily. That's it. Not, you don't have a site in Boardman, a site in Hepner, we're gonna choose which one next year, that's not the case. It could be. But it might not be, but would be that good?
Yeah. Clear as mud, Dave. So I do have a question. For clarification, so we compared, what, what I heard you say. We built in Hepner. So now would Judge Deal's, he'll stay in the old building, or would he move and use the same courtroom with the circuit courts using?
The current, uh, the current program had, um, set up to have the justice court move and be associated with the new, the new site. So we would have a large, um, full courtroom for the circuit court, and we'd have a smaller, uh, hearing room slash courtroom for the justice court.
Okay.
Allows us to consolidate security and other aspects.
Yes, that's what I was trying to get to in my mind, you said, there would be two courtrooms essentially in that building.
In that building.
Okay. As you said, you know, so try to alleviate that.
Right now, you're at, and that's one of the things, they said, okay, we're okay sharing common spaces, but the courtrooms need to be separate because we have various needs and, and they're tripping over each other at this point. And, um, and it, you know, especially with the space limitations, um, it, it becomes onus.
Please, I have one thing that might clarify. You have a program that's been put together for a specific building that can go in Hepner, it could go in Boardman on that two acre site. If you choose a dis, different business model, they're gonna come up with a new program, how many parking spaces do you need, what's the best building type? Might go just fine on that two acre location, might not, but you'll go through the programming process first, and in that process, then you'll determine that where the best spot for it is. So it's, it's either decision is really, is it this program or that program?
Have you been instructed to look at another site for the ones you have, have already about it?
No, we, there was like nine sites that we started with initially, and then we parsed it down to five and went a little deeper, and then parsed it down to three and went even deeper.
He's speaking of the board.
Oh, in Boardman.
In Boardman, have you, have you been instructed to, to preliminary look at another site that hasn't been involved with our decision?
Nothing. Like we look at the long term, not just up today, but the long term needs, I mean, I would assume a facility like this is gonna be a thirty year asset at least. Seventy four years. So, you know, I think that we need to look at the continued growth of the county, where the needs of those services are going to be, and not just of what's best for today, or what's best seventy five years. The road.
Seventy five years, very, for seventy years, you know, until the county. Okay. A little bit long term build.
Not to your point.
You want me to take him on the stand out it?
No.
It's a couple of, it's still been clear out there.
Where you stomp around the mud hole today?
Okay. So, if you have any more questions with your principals or the people involved and. And I'd like to thank Judge Hill for being here.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it very much, yeah.
Judge Hill, thank you.
Yeah, and so, uh, so it's good information, you wanna bring that? Something's gonna happen at our next meeting, but.
Chair, before you do, sorry, is there any direction you'd ask staff to prepare or explore the points?
Well, to stomp around the mud hole a little bit more, if you or somebody is thinking about another site in Boardman, I think that should be presented of where it is. I believe, have you been, preliminary, you told, that's, how long is it gonna take, you know? I mean, if that's, if that's where we're, if that's where we're going, it's been kind of behind the scenes, it hasn't been. Another site than the one that's. Some commissioners want to do that, I guess.
Maybe I brought it up the last meeting that I felt, after talking to, after talking with, in public meeting, after talking to the project manager about the site that we, that's we own. That it wasn't a preferable site, it would be better if it's located centering out, and the only thing I could think of was up at the senior center and city hall. Some area that I, who owns them, I asked the project manager if he had the opportunity to, to look into that. And maybe I don't have to.
No, 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 that's.
But that was the question I had at the last meeting, so that, it wasn't behind the scenes, but in public, and that's the only time I've heard that.
Yeah, well, I just think we ought to add it to our list.
If, if that's something that we as a condition together. And it wasn't, and I was the only one that said anything about the last meeting, so nobody else is interested in that, then.
Well. But, well, yeah, that's part of the decision process, I'm trying to make it a little clearer here is, is.
So I still put it out there, if we are gonna be gonna consider more, that'd be the site that I'd prefer to see explored.
Well, 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 Daniel, I don't, um, I don't make decisions here, but if, if you wanna consider that site, maybe we could add some of that information in our next meeting, whatever it is.
And that's what I'd asked for in the last meeting, hoping it was gonna come to this informational. That was, that was why, I was hoping it would happen. And I didn't ask it, Matt, I asked it directly.
Okay.
So, I think it's just a, it's just.
So, for him?
Sure.
And for what it's worth, you know, I'm buying with the property that they're, they talked about, because it's an industrial. Kitty Corner is the rec center, the Sage Center, the early learning center, BMCC campus, you know, literally across the street is a restaurant. You know, right down the street are Corpio Apartments, you know, I mean, so I don't see the downside to the site. When we were considering the middle site, it was on industrial round, and people were hoping that with the. Bringing in of infrastructure, that the newer industry could literally be a next door neighbor on the other side of the fence, so I don't see the downside of locating it.
So is that a yes or no, have the, have the project manager investigating the site?
Sure.
If, if I could just suggest, we'll take a look at, um, you know, what the average cost per acre is, just availability, uh, if we were to, and what that impact on the project would be without. Without being specific on certain things, which we wouldn't want to cloud any possible negotiations.
And by looking at. So, I, I was, it was just a thought.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not against, I just, like I said, I just, just trying to talk, stumping around the middle, you know, trying to let everybody know where we're at in this process. Commissioners, public, everybody, you know, and try to, try to bring those things to the head and give it down, keep going on, as time is running, I'm sure. So, just wanna, I just wanna make sure that staff and project managers have clear direction for us, where do they go next? We vote to accomplish it our next. No, I don't, I don't have any. Objections of looking at another site.
Yeah, no. I, I don't think I've.
You, you, you put it in a good word when you just mentioned it, so, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. All this good, probably. Thanks again, Judge. You, appreciate it.